We'll call to order the August twenty first two thousand twenty three meeting of the parent, family and community outreach subcommittee meeting um Deb's team please follow.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Mr. Harp?
Yeah.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Well salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My nation. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through a medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present but are deemed acknowledged and purposeful. Do we have any citizens in question?
Uh we do not.
Okay so we will jump right in. So first order or first discussion is we are looking at our out of school hours support. I don't know who wants to start.
So I guess well I just you know welcome to the team this is my first go around with this meeting um and taking the lead of with with our district team. Um I know the team has been in place all year working with schools um and we'll get at the different ways um that we have been collaborative in working with our schools. And then some forward planning as we think about where we're headed and how um our intentions are to build our team to be um more inclusive of building based leaders so that we can have true touchpoints in schools and really infiltrate some of our programming. So it's not just coming at the from the district level down. Um partnering with the buildings and partnering with all of our SEL support staff particularly in schools as we know we've been made some heavy investments in these staff across the last couple of years and so we want to capitalize um on their membership in our schools and leadership uh with our families and the connections that they make day in and day out.
So just jumping into this part of discussion I don't know if it's helpful or I think it is helpful if we just do introductions of who is part of that SEL team. So families who might be watching some of this at home might have a an understanding of who actually is part of that out of school support team.
Out of school support team?
Well obviously in general who is part of their support team.
Well interesting yeah yeah. Um so building principals you know are the first priority in every building leading the charge. We then have vice principals um serving underneath them in a capacity of SEL support. As well as then we think about our third tier our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors. In addition to that you know the next tier is our behavior therapists, our SEL liaisons. Some schools are utilizing instructional support liaisons in that way. So there are a range of job titles in our schools um but all servicing and you know helping to support the climate and culture and meeting the needs of our kids and families.
For the public's purpose people like this team. And so can you introduce yourself and Claudia can introduce herself.
Oh then now. Yeah so please. Perfect.
Um Claudia Casamlo. The SEL coordinator of the division.
Or name.
Cindy Kudo I am the director of parent community engagement.
Here what do I do I'm the director of guidance.
I think you matter too as part of that team. Ray Ponce superintendent.
Um kind of just following up on some of the um discussion there.
Uh we we missed an introduction.
Oh.
Oh sorry yeah sorry I yeah right Dr. B um maybe wrong hot assistant superintendent for student services.
Um following up on some of um pretty much the pyramid that you just named do we have do we have that visible anywhere for families um?
We we actually are creating the org charts for every department we have we've started that that group has grown tremendously so we've had to redo um the reorg charts but every department is actually creating because every department has added new positions for its charts.
Oh. Yeah I think that's just part of the.
Post it on our website under Dr. B and her on her page and all of us.
Absolutely yeah. Awesome that's great.
Are there any other questions on out of school hours support?
That's it.
So in thinking about out of school hours support um you know we we consider ourselves to always be open. Um often all summer long you know we've been in communication with families whether it's students that have attended our summer programs. Families that have been in need of different everything um through the parent center as well as building based outreach um to our buildings so you know folks getting emails even from students I'm in need of this I'm in need of that support also partnering with mass hire you know you'll hear about some of those outcomes this summer. So we've had some real tight networks of support um and even if it wasn't students having direct contact to our staff lots of kids have been involved in programs all across the summer and those adults have then been connected back to the former public schools. Uh I can think about the basketball work that was going on all summer you know up at Derby as well as in Kennedy Park with some of the work that Bobby led um the enrichment program um for kids and families who choose to participate and then also our twenty first century program um that ran at every single building. So we also this year and that would come up too you know we also this year ensured that every building had either an adjustment counselor or a guidance counselor on a part time or a full time basis for all summer programs um. And then we created a little network across the summer program so that if anything came up that anyone didn't feel as though they were ready and quick to respond to they had a network of peers across the district who they knew they could reach out to and get support. So we ensured this year that all programs across the district had SEL support um and folks that knew how to handle any crises and should they come up um or any student needs or family needs as we know the needs ebb and flow even throughout the course of the summer. So that's some of the steps that we took and collaborating with the former police department there were a few instances this summer that a couple of our students got themselves caught up in some things in the community and the former police department was readily in contact with us as well as the district level to make sure that we could filter that information back to the buildings and get the information in people's hands that needed it. Um so that is some of the work that we did in relation to the out of school hour support specifically.
Any other questions or anything to add to any of that?
To jump back just a little bit this meeting was supposed to have been scheduled and you brought but because of illnesses and family emergencies and lots of different situations this got pushed back. So right now I think we are recapping a lot of what we had hoped to capture what our plans were for the summer but right now we're kind of doing a little bit bit of backtracking until we get what we did do and then hopefully brainstorm what we can do in the future so hopefully we can get on a better sandal. So there's no other questions we can move on to our next topic which is summer engagement what did that look like for us this summer?
So we had programs all across the city um we partnered with twenty first century which is our after school and before school in some cases um pro programming extracurricular and um enrichment programming. As well as we supported our ELL students specifically this summer with an ELL summer program really focusing on language needs of our kiddos and and really digging deep on a focused academic piece for our English language learners which is different than that of our students in the enrichment and twenty first century program. Uh we also took advantage of the Derby pool there were a number of swimming lessons that went on all summer long. Um a number of our twenty first century students were also able to participate um in those programs and get those experiences. Lots of field trips I can tell you you know every kiddo that I ran into just could not stop stop talking about all of the different field trips. Um Fonsica also you know partnered with Frack and they were doing some kindness rocks um zoo trips ice cream days at E S Y right that was another big program turnout over there as well but they took the mobile farm to our E S Y program. So those we were finally getting back to some of our more traditional projects as compared to where we've been over the last few summers and you could definitely get that vibe um through all of the photos that we took if if anyone's following us on Instagram or follows our Facebook page Deb Sardino was out and about all summer long. Um I've actually linked into the agenda a host of different photo albums so by all means you know click through and it'll certainly make you smile for days as we just look at all the fun that kids had across the city this summer and all of the adults who showed up for our kids this summer. We had record breaking applications for summer work adults wanted to be present in part of the work this summer which has been a nice shift over the last couple of challenging summers. Um so it was really nice it has been nice to see things get back to a more tempered expected place um from K to eight from pre-K through twelve rather.
How many um how many students?
You know I I don't know that exact number but we'll get that number now that all the summer programmings are coming to an end and
I get it.
Yeah.
um but we served you know when we get to numbers the mass hire alone we gave we supported young students with over three hundred jobs this summer in the city.
It's great.
Um from ages fourteen and up um and fall River Public Schools has been a s- a a key site and and host for this work we started this work back in the spring. Um Tina Sharet was you know doing presentations at all of our middle schools and really helping to get kids recruited. I know that uh the schools were heavily involved of also providing the work permits to make sure that they could get their jobs and helping you know the counselors and support staff at buildings helping to put paperwork together making sure we could help kids get eligible to cut through some of the paperwork process for families and kids and so we really saw a lot of success um across all programs so you know I would say we probably served about a thousand students this summer um if not more than that.
That's great.
Um as we look at the range of programs the different populations of students we served in special programs and then some of our larger um programs that even if we were partners with it was our kids and we were helping get those programs mobilized across the city.
It actually it has shifted from being a quiet time in summer to being a very busy time right so the more our kids leave our kids the better it is I agree.
That's good. Sure yeah.
It it's there are a lot of pe- and and the good part was we also had summer programming where last year we were struggling to hire staff to um you know to run those programs this year most programs were run completely by our staff so it feels good that we're getting ourselves back into the routine summer is a busy time
Yeah definitely.
it really is you know uh it's a different kind of busy but it is a very busy time.
Um in addition Drew I'm not sure if you want to speak a little bit to the Coaching for Change summer program. Um you know that that is our during the school year college mentor after school program that we run typically at our middle schools most specifically. Um Coaching for Change again this summer ran summer programs at our school sites we served over two hundred students in Coaching for Change programs across the city this summer um and some of those kids might have been enrolled in dual programs right Coaching for Change in the afternoon and maybe you know the morning um academic piece. But that partnership continues to grow as we look to expand our partnership with that organization as well.
Yeah absolutely so we we had um twelve college students serving as mentors across our five uh middle school sites uh and essentially they all had a teacher uh as a support person that they were paired with and they connected with students you know in the classrooms who they served as a variety of role including uh supporting the twenty first century program it's in the enrichment program and then also some of the um the credit recovery program that we offer uh at our middle schools.
Um and then you know one additional piece this summer I know that the Pace team has really just I think it's really important that we just recognize the work that's going on at Pace this summer um we are yet again as everybody knows going back to Aspen X two um but for Pace this is not the same transition back to Aspen um at like it is for many of us because prior to this if we remember we did not use Aspen registration it was Gateway Registration. So for Pace this is year two of a major overhaul um at one point down at Pace this summer we were literally doing paper applications because we were in between two systems um so there's been a lot of work that's had to go on at Pace you know on demand in the moment but then also a lot of backtracking and following up. Um so it's been a challenge to just get the needs met on the ground and and boots on the ground in the building let alone making our way out to community events. And Pace has been on the go with registrations on the go if anybody came to the after you know before school block party that we just were gracious to be part of um this past weekend Pace did over fifty student registrations in some way shape or form there were large numbers at the Pace Center. Um so there was you know a front and center presence by uh Cindy's team down at Pace so Cindy I'm not sure if you want to give a little info as to what those on the go registrations look like.
Yeah so we just bring iPads out into the community with um um you know all the paperwork that's needed so families can just register wherever they're at um in the community they can then just drop off any necessary paperwork that they may not have on them or email it to us um so it just becomes super convenient for families especially those with multiple children it's just um you know it's it's been we've grown this uh over the years um so we really look at each year how many numbers we're accepting on the go and uh the number has really increased uh through the year so it's definitely something that we are going to continue um you know it's very fruitful for our you know both our families and staff um and again it's fun to be out there you know with families interrupted so it's a pleasure to do that.
It's also an opportunity to bring the services to where people are right um I think we always expect them to come to us and I
Yeah.
we talk about parent engagement that's one of the things that we need to do more of right we need to meet we say we want to meet our kids where they are we want to meet our teachers where they are we need to meet our parents where they are too and bring that service because people can't get to us for many different reasons at times and it just takes away that obstacle so anytime we can do that um it it serves both you know us as well as
We should probably do that more often go out into the community it definitely helps you know.
Completely agree. Completely agree.
Do a lot of partnering with our early intervention programs to get you know to go out on those businesses and register the kids right there and then.
Absolutely absolutely. So I probably.
So we do go out to um community daycareers as well and that happens back in February so we start really early in the year so that going into the summer where you know had a higher number of K registrations um you know to really relieve the uh influx of people coming in during the summer so yeah that's that's something that we just keep building on every year.
How how's the traffic Cindy at the center is it hectic?
Yeah so right now it's.
It's still hectic?
This is the you know uh two.
Crunch time?
Yeah two to three weeks of crunch time so there are lines at the door.
No kidding right?
I mean on any given day uh lately they're serving you know over a hundred families so it it's it's a lot.
So I can see as a provider who's gone with families to go and reg- register their children um just taking off that public meeting cap for a second and it's it's not a difficult process but it does take some time to get the kids registered even though it is a very streamlined process there's a lot of information that needs to get get put in that system so even though they have it down to the T it's very streamlined it's very good together there's still only so much that you can get through you know it took it I mean it takes a good chunk of time to go through that with a family to even you know kind of filter through all the complex needs a family might have to really look at what is in all the documents.
Documents.
Like on average what what how long does one student take like one person?
So it depends if a family has pre-registered online it you know it can just take maybe ten minutes tops but if they haven't
Yeah. Right.
uh or if they're you know struggling registering online and we sit with them I mean it could take you know an hour uh more it depends on
Right. Yeah.
how much information you know they need or um you know for example if a family's missing some documents and say medical they can sit with our nurse there who will call the doctor's office to try to streamline that as well and help them uh get that information. So it it all depends on the family need.
Yeah.
But pre-registering is the way to go um it really streamlining it makes it super you know simple too.
But having said that about the timeframe I can tell you that any family that I've brought over has never once had a concern about how long it took because they've always they've always come back and said that the staff have been really helpful but it just does from their end it does take a while to get all that information just depending on again on what what the situation is.
Yeah and this week and next week is not our norm this is you know just a crunch time so you know it's uh it's
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
it it is long waits i- if you're coming later in the day this week and next week uh but uh you know first thing in the morning we're able to process very quickly so I would suggest morning.
Right.
Which is hard because public transportation is running first thing in the morning so for a lot of families that becomes a barrier there's all of these elements that play into that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Was there like a thought superintendent to have like satellite locations to run the city?
Well I mean I as I'm sitting here I'm thinking about uh even those um evenings in the park who are very well attended throughout the city.
Right.
I think that's something for us to look at for next year if we could set up shop that because they go through
Yeah.
uh all the different neighborhoods right instead of and have them they were all very well attended.
Yeah yeah. Yeah.
A lot of families there if we set up shop there and we take registration if we publicize that we're going to be there and people will be able to do that
Yeah.
that is yet another opportunity for people to to get that work done and I I do think we need to explore different options for going out into the community setting up shop at an afternoon here an afternoon there where we know there areas that are
Right.
frequented by our families that would be your lunches in the parks.
Exactly.
Yeah I mean just the fact that there were fifty at the weekends that's that's a big number.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And we've gone into Sunset Hill we had a resource fair uh Father D had a we so we've done that as well throughout the summer.
Yeah.
Um the Tomato Center had an event where we were able to uh register families a little received here so we try to get out as many uh you know.
Great. And that works out well when you go out there to you know that's true.
Absolutely yeah.
I think the more we do it the more we publicize it the more people will know and then hopefully
Yeah.
Yeah.
we become proactive instead of reactive so people will go and get their child registered early because it is for some people it is difficult to navigate through
Yeah exactly.
the the electronically.
Right yeah.
Any other questions or do we cover everything on there? Just yeah before we move on to community partnerships did we get everything or do we have any other questions?
Yes.
Okay so on to community partnerships.
So we are continuing to look for ways to partner with our community partners um that you know like we've had some district focused efforts and then as we know the building focused efforts often reach out to our community partners to leverage needs as they realize a need and then also a resources available right um Claudia did a great job last year recruiting on a larger district scale to get some programs up and off the ground for schools to be able to just take advantage of. I can speak to you know the mindfulness karate it was a total hit at Henry Lord you know when I was there as principal um and the resource was great because Claudia got the resource got it all set up and it was literally like a turnkey situation at the building level. Um so Claudia do you want to speak about some of those pieces?
So we're actually offering it again this year so that was me possible for our SEL mental health plan that we partnered on and it was great because when we were doing our October anti bullying awareness month um a lot of our students in our elementary schools were coming into school with these anti bullying pledges so I'm like that was the message we were giving at our schools but the community was doing it as well too so um and I know that your child went to that school to get to that button so it was just it was nice we co- connecting
My daughter was one as well.
with the sensei there and said you are giving it the same message we're giving our students and um he was then he went to five or six of our schools last year and through that going half world of work he's coming back again and we're offering this to some of our elementary schools. Um we also reached out to one of our larger agencies to provide mental health counseling to our schools. Um so a lot of that plan went towards that so they started uh all of our schools last year not the high school all um elementary and middle schools um and they're still offering it to of course in the of this school year as well so meeting with her next uh tomorrow to go over what the plan is to offer what groups and what the schools need as well too so we got to make sure that we're going to give them the schools what they need based on um students and but we've always communicated and we've got great partnerships with our communities that when we see a need whether it's a student or family needs um we we've built great community partnerships with with our local agencies to say hey we have this need can you help us find a way to bridge the support for this family or this student um so that's something that we continue to do and I'm happy to see that continue to grow because they know that we're going to tap into them for the support and and we might not have a answer right away but we know that um the community is there for us.
To piggyback on the karate piece so again my daughter was one of those kids that brought in one of these pledges um I had nothing to do with the mindfulness karate it's nothing to do with me except she brought in this this pledge as well. Um but one of the nice things that he did was we invited all of the kids down so after he did these sessions at the school we invited them down to the dojo to do um maybe six weeks worth of lessons at no cost and I gotta tell you the dojo was packed so we had tons of kids from Fonsica we had ton- we had tons of kids from Green each school had a night that they were invited to come down so that way the dojo wasn't inundated and they showed up. Um at one point there were about sixty kids I took a video there were good like sixty kids that weren't just kids that were already enrolled these were additional kids that had come from the schools so you know I think that it helps on both sides because they're providing a service to the kids at the school but also you know it it promotes their business as well so it's a win-win situation the kids are getting the support and the business is getting the support as well.
I'm really hopeful that that career is offered in the issue because I'd love to offer more opportunities for our students and families that might not have those opportunities otherwise we need to bring it into the school and find a way like how do we teach some of these SEL skills and competencies to our kids while they're doing something that's fine and that they're enjoying so I'm really hoping that's offered in the issue.
And what you don't know and what you haven't been exposed to you just don't know so to your point right like when our if our kids and families don't know about this opportunity it's not something they themselves ever experienced growing up um how they know what it can be for their kids so if our if the schools can be a place where the kids get introduced to it and then it can also extend out to be that connection for families um I think that's a beautiful thing right for everybody involved. So those are a few of the things that we took on at the district level um and you know looking to partner more deeply with schools at the building base level this year um so that we can expand upon these partnerships in meaningful ways to meet the needs of all the different school communities.
You still have I don't know if you want to scroll where you have a resource fair on there so I didn't have.
We're not allowed that.
Yeah I um um our number keeps growing um so I think last week when I said we had ninety agencies confirmed I think I had seventeen or eighteen as of this morning um you know and I personally phone called local agencies not flyer not a name you know which is A um we would love to showcase the community support that we can offer for our students and families so that's happening um this week for all of our school adjustment counselors being paid and saying how all of our supports have are richest to be coming um so that's going to be offered this week at CUS but again it's just really um not everyone's from Fall River that works in Fall River but just maybe I'm aware of like what's out there what you know we are who is rich uh what's out there who we tapping to in the sense that a face with a neighborhood agency as well too um and the hope is just getting more resources and connections with families and for students and families so um let's see what that's going to look like.
Any other questions on the community partnerships please? What are the questions uh about groups that I have what how many groups were they running?
Which agencies so our schools were all running groups we have almost sixty school adjustment council which I say that number proud um.
D eight.
D eight.
Sixty eight.
Oh boy.
That's almost sixty.
We're actually seeing that now.
We need to say at one point it's sixty right now but almost sixty uh and so.
Just lost one hundred.
I know I've lost two so close to sixty I'll have to count again and figure out how do I win.
I have fifty nine.
So all of our school adjustment counselors they're running groups whether it's lunch bunch groups whether it's a social skills groups so they're running groups on a regular basis at all levels in addition to that we partner with our community as well too um to say if there's a need how do they help us fit that need as well too um I I I will get a number how many groups that we want in each of our schools that'd be good information to just see if you share albums in school so I think it's.
No I think it's good information because I know that the the stacks the SEL liaison the guidance counselors I know that they are jam packed and so if we are outsourcing some of the group work you know that's not necessarily a bad thing I think that's a good thing because then that gives our stacks our SEL liaison their guidance counselors more time to be one on one with the kids because they're you know are these are the folks that are really licensed to do this work so they're the ones that are you know mental health trained they're the ones that hold that license that should a crisis arise or even be able to be proactive the group work is meant to be proactive so if we can outsource some of that you know that's wonderful but really our our counselors are are.
Right. Right. The clinical work belongs.
The clinical work belongs to really in that not even so much our SEL liaisons but really even our school adjustment council world because really they're the ones that most of them are the ones that are holding those licenses right I'm not talking about your um your DESI licenses I'm talking also that you're typically your social work license because even your mental health
License that a health.
but even your license as a health counselor licenses social workers are able to assess the section if necessary than the health counselors can.
Mm-hmm.
So they're really the ones that hold that liability so that's why I'm saying like they're the ones that really have to be facing those situations so if we can outsource some of that even train some of our SEL liaisons to run some of these groups that would be super cool.
And they are our SEL liaisons are triaging right they're that tier that in the middle so before so that
Yeah. Yeah.
that that's exactly why you all found or funded our SEL liaison position we created that position right?
Mm-hmm. I should make more of them yes.
You know how I feel about it.
I know we'll we'll have sixty no worry don't worry it's not worry it's coming.
It's like Oprah everybody. Everybody gets an SEL liaison.
So they and and they were running groups already last year so I am meeting with them again this week we have we have a nice
Yes they are.
SEL library of group curriculum too to share um and to meet as a group just to share our resources and ideas as well too so that way they're able to run groups um again they were doing that already last year so the hope is they're going to be continuously.
Yeah different kind of groups like you said there's tiers of so we have to make sure we match the needs to the appropriate adults.
Yep. But a lot of that work can be proactive which is why you know when reserving those folks like those SEL liaisons their work is so important
Absolutely.
let's be able to do that the really proactive.
Well the more we do that work the less reactive we need to become right the goal would be to have those groups as a proactive measure so we don't get to that tier three.
high needs, I'm not saying we will never, we will always have a need, but that need, that triangle should be, it should be much smaller.
We're always going. There's a reason why that's at the top of the triangle, it should be much smaller than the bottom of the triangle, it's really heavy on that tier one sometimes.
Exactly.
Right, you know how I feel about groups, I'm gonna run a group forever. Right, it's annoying because I talked about this all the time, but we're gonna run a group forever. Is it an app for that, is groups for that? So you have any other questions on, um, community partnerships?
It was a good segue into connection between staffing and S E L program. See, there was a point, there was a method to my madness.
Um, so in the agenda, you'll notice, um, I, I threw a few hyperlinks in because I wasn't sure if, you know, if anyone had the chance or the opportunity.
Yep.
Um, really asking schools to kind of showcase the work that they have been able to do over the course of the year.
Absolutely.
Um, because as we know, right, like we support certain elements of the work and then the buildings, you know, go off on their own sort of angles and leverage, you know, some of their more historical programs, you know, the annual things that everybody does that brings community and family together. Um, so in, you know, there's a, you know, a slide deck, you know, that everybody kind of went through.
Yep.
Um, where we just talked about the month-to-month things that schools were able to accomplish and there's different stuff happening at all of our schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think it's just exciting to see that across the district, there's a lot of great stuff going on at every school. Even though that stuff might be different, um, but really looking for ways to bring the community together um, and build the climate and culture of the schools and you can see that, um, schools capture it differently and showcase it differently, right?
And the community, absolutely.
But there's a lot of great work going on across all of our communities, from literacy nights, you know, a focus on academics and academic achievement, celebrating student success and student outcomes, and then your good old typical, you know, trunk of treats where everyone's eating tons of candy and we send them home with family with bags full of candy. Um, to our annual Thanksgiving events and recognition of that, to a lot of, you know, other springtime events that bring our families back, back to the table at the end of the year. Um, in preparation for the summer and marketing of summer programming, right? So I think there's a nice blend with going on, you know, our goal will be to continue to expand and grow. Um, sharing of best practices, I, I don't know that we do enough of that when it comes to some of this community building work. A lot of great things in some cases might be happening at one school and it's gonna be our goal next year to create systems through this S E L pipeline and buildings, um, where vice principals and community facilitators are really leading that work. Because the community facilitators come together, Cindy has led that group all year long. There's been so much good work that they have really, you know, been the brains behind and innovative about. And then it, you know, certain things have really excelled in certain schools, so we're looking to create a forum where we can share ideas so that we're not recreating the wheel at every turn. I think we all work a lot harder sometimes than we necessarily need to and if we can build these communities of sharing of resources and materials and ideas, I think people will stay energized, they'll stay committed to the work a little differently and give opportunities for putting a fresh look on certain things, um, that might not be getting results we used to get, right? And so how do we think about meeting families where they are, um, how do we leverage, um, whatever opportunities we can to ensure that, you know, we understand that parent engagement is broad, right, it's not just family, you know, we can't just measure parent engagement and, you know, you've said this before Sarah. We can't just measure parent engagement by the families that show up at open house, right, it's way bigger than that. Um, and we need to be able to recognize those families that are gonna show up and then the ones that show up in a different way for their kids, um, to show that they're involved and they're part of the equation. Um, and so we'll be looking to continue on that work, um, and expand upon that work again this year.
I say constantly that if we're measuring family engagement by whether or not a family has shown up at a particular event, then I would be a disengaged parent because I don't typically show up to school events. But by no means am I a disengaged parent, my work schedule doesn't allow for it all the time. And there are a multitude of reasons why I'm not gonna show up with my kid to a school event. Maybe a sibling might or maybe my husband might, but it's unlikely that I'm multiple. Doesn't mean I'm disengaged, just means that I'm, there are other things that I'm gonna do behind the scenes. Right.
Well, and parent engagement is beyond that too, right, so, I mean, this last week, this week, a lot of parents calling, I want my child here, I want my child there.
Yeah.
And they all start off by saying, I'm sorry, I'm bothering you or whatever, I'm like, no, we, we want you to be engaged, like, we want you to care and care enough to, that's, you're advocating for your.
I'm not gonna advocate for your child.
Who is, right? So, parents advocating for their children, parents supporting their child, you know, reaching out and saying, hey, I wanna make sure because my child needs this or this or this, that's in, in engagement, right? So it's not just the activities, it's really parents taking an active role in their child's learning.
Right.
That's what we need to focus on, we don't want parents to feel bad because they can't go to an activity. We want parents to feel good that they took part in something their child was doing, they're asking questions, that's okay. You're supposed to ask questions, nobody knows everything, I might not have the answer, but I'll, I'll get the answer for you. Might not be today, but I'll get the answer for you, but it's okay. Do, continue to do that because you're engaging your child's learning.
They have a connection with their kids teacher, they have a connection with other parents in the classroom, whatever that might look like. You know, and I say all the time, I come from and in my family, my parents did not show up to all of those events, partially because of a language barrier, partially because they didn't know to, right, it wasn't something, they valued education, there was no question about that. But they didn't know that that was their role to show up because that's not how things were done there, their work schedules didn't allow for it either. So there's a million and one reasons why families may not show up to those things and we can't penalize families. Or make the assumption that they're not in our age because we don't ever see them.
Well, it's creating that culture where they feel safe to say, I can't go to that, but I wanna know about this, you know, so we have to create that culture
Mm-hmm.
in every single building so that our parents feel safe and don't feel intimidated by approaching someone and asking them a question.
Is there like a, I mean, with everything that was mentioned tonight, um, as far as with the community engagement and getting out there in the community and uh, increasing hopefully more parents getting involved in their child's education and in the community and everything that we've been doing for the past year, I guarantee that there's more parents getting involved, there's no question about it, but is there like a gauge to see what, how, how, how much it's improved?
Gauge. Yeah, we would have to, um, get that data.
Because it, it most certainly has, there's no question about all the work that everyone's done at this table, but I'm just curious, I just wanna.
Well, I think, you know, the question I would have is, you don't wanna underestimate and you don't wanna overestimate.
Yeah.
But at the same time, how do we measure engagement?
It looks different.
Right, it looks different at different points around different events, it, it looks different
Yeah, right.
for different people, right, I, I feel like, you know, and we can certainly look into this as we continue to move forward with, you know,
Yeah.
conditions for learning surveys and other, and other outreach for data, but I think for families to be able to say, like, I believe in my school, I believe that I, that it's a safe place that I can go, like, you know, just even thinking about a simple form, like, I, I feel accepted at my school, I feel like being, right, like.
Some type of something that's already expressed, that's probably true.
Leverage and, and think about, you know, I think.
Right. Because there's, there's no question that, like I said before, with everything that's been going on for the past year and with this committee, there's definitely the increase in parents getting involved has increased, I just, I'd be curious as to how much. But.
I think we have, um, I'll be honest, I mean, personally, I feel like we have a long way to go.
Yeah.
Oh, in that, in, in that arena, but I, I do think that we have made strides, um, taking away some barriers. I do think that if we really create that culture and, um, really engage with our families, we engage with our families also. We're gonna create that relationship, attendance will tell a story, right, students will show up, that will be one of the indicators that will show us
One of these, yeah.
that our kids are engaged, that families are engaged, they're encouraging kids to go to school and we're gonna see output there. So there are multiple ways for us to, to gauge our success. It's not necessarily gonna be one indicator, but we, there are multiple ways that we can, yes, parent-teacher conferences are important for us to have. I think that we opened up doors and now we have some of them, we have virtually, because some parents can't leave the home for one reason or another. That's another way for us to engage our families, right, so we have to open up opportunities that allow parents to engage not just in the traditional ways that we're, we've been used to.
Yeah, agree.
I think we have multiple systems to be able to measure that, sense of belonging is one, feeling safe walking into your kid's school, feeling like people in your kid's school
Mm-hmm.
are gonna listen to what you have to say, that they speak your language, you know, there's multiple pieces and
Sure.
I think attendance tells more a piece of the story because I think it was Henry Lord that had, um, had a very low attendance rate and then it jumped. It's still, it was still low, but when you look at the, I don't know if it was anyone, I wanna say it was, but when you look at the difference in where it was to where it was a significant jump, so.
They decreased their chronic absence.
Right, that's what it was.
Okay.
So it was a significant jump in a really positive direction, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So is it, is it where it should be? No, but you can't discount the incredible gains that remain there, right? So it's, the attendance will tell a story, but it's not gonna tell the whole story.
Uh, I think our community facilitators, you know, that's the next bullet point that we brought up and identified, the community facilitator position has been really essential um, to that family outreach, right, when there is a person in the building who in many cases can speak your language, you know, so we're not navigating translation services, but it can be personable, it can be repetitive, it's predictable, we know who that person is, um, I think we've begun to start to get some really nice traction with that position. Um, across, yeah, like across collaboration of those, of those folks as well.
Cross collaboration.
Um, and so we're gonna continue to look to push the folks that are in those positions to continue to be the face of schools and help be some of the triaging, um, of supports as families need it and as they, they know to call the school for that person to be there and then they are knowledgeable of the who, to your point earlier Bobby, right, like who, who I put them in touch with in the building if they don't already know to solve this problem. Um, and it goes back to engagement, right, I think one of the ways we're gonna also gauge it is when we, when we see a decline in families reaching out to the district level because the schools are meeting their needs, right, people don't feel like they need to call the superintendent if the building-based leadership is meeting their needs. Um, and that's a range of different reasons why people call, right, or feel as though their needs are not getting met by the building. Um, so I think, you know, that will be our goal to have fewer and fewer of those calls to the superintendent's office because the buildings are able to triage the need and respond to families as needed in a way that meets the needs of families to get accomplished what they want, not necessarily always necessarily giving a family a yes to something, that's not what I mean either, right?
Yeah.
Um, but if families understand the why behind the no and if our teams are, are strong in our patience and take the time to communicate, um, I think we can continue to make improvements from that angle as it relates to families understanding um, whatever the situation might be that they're in and then how we're gonna help support them to either get out of it or fix the problem. So that we can all agree and move on, on to continuing doing business together. Um, and the community facilitators will be central in, in, in that work with us as they continue to grow on our teams. Um, and then also just thinking about some of the S E L program, I mean, you know, today was another beautiful day up at Durfee High School, we welcomed for the first day of three, our new teacher orientation for all of our new teachers, um, upwards of about a hundred and ten new teachers with, oh, one forty-four.
One forty-four.
And a hundred and six mentors, that's the number. Um, but so, yeah, we had just about a hundred and fifty new staff members, um, up at Durfee today and one of the elements of their training um, was also the leadership program.
But not those two sacks that we gave them.
Well, they just teach, it was just the orientation, it was just the teachers. This is just teachers. Um.
I wasn't advocating.
Yes, yes.
As you both said, it's not a thing. Um, but I know Drew and Claudia, um, were central in today's work with the secondary folks, um, supporting teachers with an exposure to the advisory curriculum that we invested in last year, the leadership program, I'm not sure if you guys wanna speak a little bit to what that.
Yeah, so this is, uh, year two for us with the leadership program, so we're, we're super excited. Last year, um, we got, um, administrators and teachers training, uh, multiple points during the year, but we wanted to grab the new teachers uh, as part of their training, they had some academic and instructional training, but also learning about this new curriculum because many of them are gonna be advisors in the classroom. Um, so we had the T L, uh, two T L P trainers, um, from New York come down and run the, the, uh, the teachers through two mile lessons that they would be doing with students, uh, in the fall, hopefully they could get a sense and relieve some of the anxiety about what an advisory lesson looks like. Uh, and also, um, give some information just about, um, their curriculum and how, uh, kind of the flow of the curriculum. Typically starts with an opener or an activator, there's, there's an activity which is usually fun for the students and then the, there's a lot of discussion questions where a lot of the learning goes on throughout the lesson. So it's a lot about conflict resolution, building leadership skills, self-awareness, those types of, of skills that are aligned to castle. Um, that the curriculum built in, there's a separate curriculum, uh, for middle school and a curriculum, uh, for high school students.
And that's very similar to responsive classroom, one meeting, um, is the advisory in elementary where they have an activity and, and have a discussion, et cetera, it's all about building those relationships, right? Whether in middle school, high school or elementary, um, that's key to having, sometimes you can gauge, well, most of the time, right? You can gauge how students can be for the day based on how you greet that child and how you, you know, your first interaction with them. And so that was the elementary work that we did, um, you know, Drew and Claudia were working with the secondary folks and then we were able to recruit two of our vice principals who lead this work in our buildings, Melissa Hummel over at Sylvia and Kate Arsenal, um, from Henry Lord, they both teamed up and they led, um, an S E L workshop and really thinking about academic routines and how the importance of having strong academic routines um, really create a safe space for kids in our classrooms and that that work looks very different from kindergarten through fifth grade. Um, so it was a very action-focused P D that all of our K to five elementary teachers went through today. Really thinking thoughtfully around, you know, what are your big goals for the year, how are you gonna get kids to set their own goals for the year? And how do we create a safe space for all kids to transition into with tight routines, so everybody knows what's expected and time on learning is capitalized on, right? That we're not wasting time figuring out how to get, pass out papers and get pencils sharpened and, and get computers to go, right? Like making sure that the goals and routines are set tight. Um, so that work has already started with our new teacher as prioritizing, um, the work of responsive classroom, you know, the school committee this summer has put some substantial commitment to responsive classroom training. We, we received such positive feedback from our staff who attended it over the summer. Uh, as a matter of fact, people were pulling us apart at the park telling us, hey, I went to that training, it was so good. Um, so I was really pumped, uh, that we were able to give that as an opportunity to people.
They do a phenomenal job.
Um, yeah, and we're gonna continue to invest with responsive classroom, we've got some folks in the district that want to be part of a train the trainer program. Um, so that we can defray some costs to get all of our teachers and to keep all of our teachers current in the training, so we've got some big ideas as it relates to developing some internal modes to keep the training alive so that we don't end up in a place where we are now currently with more new staff on, onboard that don't do the training than who do. Um, so we're a little bit of a catch-up point right now, um, but the optimism is there, the excitement is there, the principals are very much receptive to wanting to invest in the training and create the time for teachers, um, so we're gonna continue to do that work, um, across buildings and then really focus in on some of the buildings, um, that are our priorities uh, for different reasons and in Fonsica will be one of them, we're working with responsive classroom to really think about a whole school reset at the Fonsica Elementary, um, as Principal Cobb has hired a number of new staff down there and just a way to re-culture and reset the building.
Right, right, right.
Um, so that staff is also excited for that opportunity as well, so.
Good energy.
Yep, yep, so we're gonna keep that momentum rolling at the same time.
Are all of our staff trained in responsive classroom? I know some have previously been trained.
We still have some, so, we've, yes, we, we have some, we've turnover staffs.
We're able to pull a long way to go.
Yes.
At, at one time we were committed every year when we were training, um, and we still have some staff from the lean too, so we're, but we're gonna try to run cohorts throughout so that we can get to that point where most staff in all buildings are trained. Cause then they can also serve as mentor teachers and supports, you know, in P L Cs and whatnot, this work can also live.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as we think about coaching and mentoring teachers who maybe haven't been formally trained, but if enough staff in the building have been, um, we can help replicate some of those best practices.
Because if we didn't that work in-house, kind of then, training the other staff, with a ton of expertise
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
that you don't necessarily have to send them out.
Yeah, yeah.
And responsive classroom really is just like, it's kind of a no-brainer model, right, it's, it's a lot of common sense stuff when you're, when you're looking at it, but they do such a tremendous job of just breaking it down.
A four-day training, that's very comprehensive.
They do a phenomenal job, they say no-brainer in the sense where you hear it and you're like, oh my gosh, yes, of course, like why was I not implementing that?
I was trained way back in elementary and then when I went to the middle school, I was trained in middle school, but it is, it really is culture-changing. During, when we, that was part of our turnaround work, everybody in that building was training responsive classroom. And I believe that was a major catalyst for re-culturing that building. And so then just extending upon some of the workshops that we also ran in partnership, um, with our S E L programming, um, I'm not sure, Cindy, do you wanna speak to some of the district workshops that we sponsored that schools were able to take part in?
Yeah, so, um, we decided last year to really bring out some district-wide, um, workshops where in years past, they were more building-based and we really wanted to, um, just to see how the, how the turnout would be, so we, we sent invitations out to the whole district. And some that we did with, was the Katie Brown presentation, um, Parent Square. and some that we did with was the Katie Brown presentation, um Parents Square, uh as we launched Parents Square, we were able to um conduct some parent workshops where we also had uh people there who could translate for any families and actually that was the majority of the families that came were Portuguese and Spanish speaking, um so we were able to work with them, get them on Parents Square and that was um highly successful, so we hope to do that again this year for any new families um that have um joined the district, in addition to that, we were able to um in partnership with F R T V, create some videos in three languages to support families as well, where they can just go on our website click the link and there's a step-by-step guide in the three languages um to help families connect to Parents Square um we we did a bullying presentation um in-person and live stream that as well, so that families that weren't able to come in person, they were able to um watch it on Facebook Live, um we did baby use misuse, uh substance abuse and misuse um which was also in-person and live streams, um and and some of the ones that we did at the school level was the new math understanding so what we did was we created some mini workshops, so as families went to um the school for let's say um bingo for books um they were able to just pop into these quick uh fifteen to twenty-minute workshops and get some mini lessons on how they can support their students at home um and then we did do a parties pause at Durfee High School, um which was an amazing program as well, and we hope to continue these and more um you know as as this year comes upon us.
Any questions about this? Did you find that at the building level it was more successful or at the district level?
Yes, so the building level is definitely more successful, so that was um you know
Yeah.
a growing game that we had last year, so uh what we'll do is you know strive at the the building level and then offering multiple schools, so it creates more of that community.
Or workshop.
Yeah.
Well, I think it speaks to your point too from earlier, right, when when families know that there's a connection with people that they know
Right.
they're gonna be more apt to show up, right, or more and maybe even think about showing up differently than if I'm just going to a place that I don't know that I'm gonna know anybody
Right.
um and so personalizing it, right, really um for us, we were just talking about this over the last couple of days, right, really leveraging that building-based team um which is one of the biggest pieces of our planning forward for next school year, um and if if we if we remember when we s- we committed to sending a team of leaders down to Georgia for the S E L conference back in late June, um we focused on bringing vice principals to begin developing this building-based S E L team, so that the five individuals of Claudia and Cindy and Drew and Victoria and myself um our district is way too big for all of this work to be from us into buildings without having a main point of contact, right? Even thinking about this demand on principals, they can't be the keepers of all this information um and be expected to keep passing things off to other people, so we're gonna create a through line um through our vice principals, which we have not really developed over the with, we haven't had any formal development of our vice principal network, they've very much been left to the principals um and their development, and as we know, all of our principals are amazing, but we all bring different skill sets, um so if a certain skill set of of the team needs to be developed or the vice principal needs to be developed, we need to have more hands in supporting those folks um and then also to Cindy's point, having that direct building contact, so when we do get these great opportunities, they can really become part of the building-based S E L team so that everybody can be aware immediately and begin recruiting and getting families involved to take advantage of um so by building this district S E L team and and expanding upon that, it's gonna be our goal to really leverage their building-based leadership to expand some of these programs.
We've had on here some future planning, so just wanted to give you a chance.
Yeah, so that you know, so as we think about the S E L priority um that the district is moving forward with this year, really leveraging this building-based team to help us navigate um the defining of this priority, how are we gonna define and measure our S E L priority around all staff creating a sense of belonging through meaningful relationships and predictable routines so that all students feel valued and are engaged in their school community in a way that positions them for academic success um that's gonna definitely be a through line this year, you know, we're we're absolutely talking about S E L in service of academic achievement, right, we wanna make sure that everybody is staying focused on remembering the end game for us um and meeting kids where they're at and families where they're at in service of academic achievement and and kids coming to school and and being successful in addition to that, thinking about our commitment to responsive classroom, we kind of already touched upon it, but that is gonna be an ongoing discussion through the course of this year to really build a team at the district level, so we're not relying on responsive classroom, but really adopting that train the trainer model that we've done in a number of different disciplines as it relates to teaching and learning, so we're excited to replicate some of those processes, um.
Hashtag, yeah, hashtag show up.
Hashtag show up, yeah.
Wanna you talk about that?
We're gonna get to the end. Um, community partner extension, you know, really a- and this is where we're starting the work this week on Thursday, is really exposing all of our support staff to the community partners directly, not just through email, not just through e-invite, but really making that person-to-person connection so that counselors can connect with people who they feel will bring the resources or or have access to the resources that their specific school needs and then everything else can kind of be part of the buffet of opportunity, right, um but our support staff know the needs of their schools specifically, we wanna make sure people know the who in the community to help meet that need um and not just relying on our team to be the connector of that, right, um so that we'll be getting that work um at the start of the year this week when administrators return back tomorrow um for the new school year, in addition to that, um as we know, we have been the recipients of the Glean grant that supported our secondary curriculum purchase um Amplify, as part of that work last week, uh we were partnering with the team from Glean and there is a the the fifth goal on the plan for the literacy adolescent literacy plan is family engagement so we met with our literacy leads and our principals last week and began the development of our literacy project and really the focus there is is gonna be to begin taking a real serious approach to educating our families around what it means to be literate as an adolescent and what families can do to support their children in continuing to develop their literacy skills as we think about expanding into a new curriculum that is high-quality instructional materials and really supporting our instructional priority we wanna make sure that families are educated and understand what their kids are experiencing and how they can support at home um so we will be directly connected to the Glean literacy project as well when it comes to family engagement um and then the last, you know, this past weekend, we were able to, you know, I mentioned, get the opportunity to participate again in the annual back-to-school block party uh that Amber Burns and a number of Bobby uh and Mimi, a couple of community partners, a ton of community partners um who all stepped up, you know, we distributed, I mean, I don't wanna throw out a crazy number, but it was over thirteen hundred backpacks um filled with materials on on Saturday, every single school was represented, um we had banks of administrators and teachers and coaches and support staff that that showed up in the park um it was truly like an energizing and and it it fast surpassed my expectations of what the day was gonna be um but we really showed up because we challenged our administrators two weeks ago, that we're gonna challenge our kids, our families and all of the adults in our community to show up, show up differently than we have before, you know, this really stems from our new take on the attendance red chair initiative, right, recognizing that wasn't really meeting the needs and and the messaging wasn't as strong as we needed it to be um but the versatility of this message, we felt really good about, because really that's what we need our kids to do lifelong is show up for themselves it's way beyond student attendance, I can tell you, you know, a number of student testimonials last year at the end of my leadership at Lord for some of my kids that we were relentless about their attendance and they were able to verbalize to us how much easier school became when they showed up every day and you know the power in that message, the power in what we know that to be, that when we show up every day for ourselves and follow our own healthy routines, um life takes on a different look for every single one of us, right, and we need our kids to understand that earlier because to so many of them, um the circumstances they're in, the the chips are somewhat stacked against them so recognizing and supporting our kids to recognize the power they have in themselves uh we think about being an influencer, right, Bobby, that conversation came up a number of times in planning, you know, how do we recognize and and bring attention to the kids who are showing up for themselves despite hard circumstances and how do we have support those kids to be the influencers in our community um for other kids to follow their lead, so we're excited about a great year back, we're excited for our show up S F R P S message families are gonna hear about it a lot, um attendance is going to be a a huge priority for our work this year um I will be unapologetic about attendance this year with our building-based leaders and teams again, meeting every family where they're at, but we need to take away any concerns, any fears, any struggles that families might be having with their schools to get kids back in school more full-time, but when kids are not in school, we cannot do what we know we do best and that's educate them um and so we're gonna work with families, we're gonna work with principals and support teams to really create that sense of belonging so that those students don't wanna show up, right, uh they get to that place where they're foot in the narrative um that they wouldn't ever not show up because they don't wanna miss out on what's going on in our school buildings every day, so that's our big goal, um I know it's big, but I also know Fall River does big and we do big good so we're gonna get after it in a big way this year, we're gonna show up for our building leaders in a way that we haven't had the opportunity to um and then build some solid systems of support when we think about um all of the investments we've made as a district because now we've got the bodies to meet the needs of kids, we just need to show up every day to do what we signed on to so that's gonna be our big challenge to all adults in our community this year.
Questions on the questions? I just have, cause I always have a comment, right, so I have one question or not question, but comment on measuring social emotional learning, I just wanna be careful about how we measure that because it can't be measured in the same way that we measure academics, and so when we talk about creating a sense of belonging and what our priority is, so that way it positions our kids for academic success I think we have to be really, really careful about how we're going to measure what social emotional learning success looks like and it does not always equal the academic portion of success, so just because, cause we have it here, that they're engaged in their school community in a way that positions them for academic success, I wanna make sure that not we're not aligning academic success with social emotional learning, because the two are not necessarily they're not necessarily connected, so we make sure that we're very clear on that, our measurement for that priority can't necessarily fall the same data points that academic success.
We're not even talking the same data points.
Yeah.
Okay, because the way it's worded up there kind of looks like we're measuring them on the same.
You'll. No, not at all.
Academic success is a lot different for each student based on where they are.
Right.
You know, that's an area that I feel high, they can ask, that's what I feel.
But but that's also, I think, why we chose positions them, not necessarily
And that's why I'm tired of it, that I wanna make sure that we're not.
Like. Yeah. Like M-CASP data will not be the measuring stick for our S E L priority, Wonder's Wonder's benchmark data will not be the measuring stick, right?
It. And neither will attendance, just because a kid is showing up every day physically does not mean that they're positioned well in social emotional learning.
Correct, yep. Yep.
But they are indicators, they will be indicators to suit for readiness, right, I'm not saying that they are the end-all and be-all, right, but if we are doing a good job on that end
Sometimes.
they could they should be serving as indicators of kids readiness to engage in learning and that will look different depending on if we're saying we wanna meet our kids where they are, that's gonna look different for all students.
Hmm.
Right, I just wanna always keep that caveat that just because a kid might be showing up every day and might be the straight A top-tier student, that doesn't mean that they're necessarily necessarily in a position where they're doing well socially emotionally, they may not be
Hmm.
they may not be at all, and so we've gotta really use our folks to develop those relationships, meet those contacts, because a lot of times those are the kids that we're all looking for.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's a piece of the field we need to show up.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments or anything, or heading into a really strong year?
Feels good.
Or I kinda like having my kids on the phone. Probably one of the two parents that are like, I don't know, you're still getting that work out of it.
Kids are ready for their routine, it's like everything else, everybody.
I'm ready.
There's a season for everything.
I know.
Be with the kids, have a good time, guys.
You're not alone, I'm sure, you're not alone.
I'm the weird one that's like, they can they can stay where they are.
We are ready to season them.
Wow, I guess we can have that.
Well, if they were like kids were younger, I'd feel the same way, but.
They're not that young, they're seven, twelve and almost fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
They're not that young. Um, we can entertain emotions in a journ.
Motion made.
Uh, roll journ.
Roll call.
Pass this, oh yeah, roll call, sorry.
Surveying.
Yes.
My brain heart.
It's definitely like to be in.
Yes.
Yes, Rogers.
Yes.